Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, July 21st, 2021. Council recess will begin next Wednesday, July 28th, and end Thursday, August 19th. Council will continue to meet virtually until September 1st, 2021. All meetings can be viewed live on the City Channel and livestreamed on YouTube. Our first order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which are or may be before City Council, and profoundly will not be permitted. Excuse me. Once you are announced, please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. Our first speaker will be Mary Berensfield, followed by Naomi Mullen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Mary Berensfeld. I live in Lawrenceville, speaking on 6112 Penn Avenue. I realize this has been a long process. Thank you for your time. As was mentioned in the preliminary hearing last week, both the Historic Review Commission and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the historic nomination for 6112 Penn Avenue based on the nomination material and subsequent testimony. On May 5th, the Historic Review Commission voted to determine if the nomination materials met criteria for landmark approval. The final voting tally approved two criteria. Criterion three, that the building shows an architectural type and design distinguished by rarity, uniqueness, and overall quality of materials and craftsmanship, was approved by a majority of the commissioners. Criterion seven stating that the building's association with important cultural or social aspects in the history of Pittsburgh was also approved by a majority of the commissioners. Two criterion were approved. I also wanted to touch upon the good question raised last week regarding what role Ed Becker played in the Building Supervision Department at Mellon Bank. Contrary to what was stated last week, Becker is not best equated to a facilities manager. If you compare the other bank designs he supervised while working for Mellon Buildings Department, you'll see an emphasis on design and technology rare in facilities departments. Mellon and Becker had a vision of architectural technology and materiality that is unique and rare in today's commercial structures. The buildings of his tenure during which Mellon Bank commissioned architects and also spearheaded designs of their own showcases concrete paraboloid shell structures of international acclaim, prefabricated kit of part bank units paralleling case study programs of the day, and more materiality-based structures like the current brick collection of banks we find ourselves discussing. To clarify, the Squirrel Hill branch, the Uptown branch, and this East Liberty branch in question hold together as a materially-driven subset of the larger architectural Mellon Bank collection, sharing exterior enassing details. This is not the hand of a facilities director. Rather, this particular department was a skilled and innovative in-house architectural group. Mellon was investing large amounts in the design of its branches and thus in the built environment of our city's communities as business strategy and outreach. If you have a moment one day, I recommend peeking into the Center Avenue entrance of the building, staring back at you. If it hasn't already been removed, is an interior foyer sequence, complete with interior planters, custom handrails, and exquisite book match marble panels, irreplaceable richness of material. To end, I'd like to emphasize the importance of familiarizing oneself with the 2014 Circulation and Mobility Action Plan prepared for the East Liberty Community by ELDI and CMU's Remaking Cities Institute. The study specifically notes this intersection as one of the most important pedestrian routes of the neighborhood. It does not recommend parking or curb cuts at the site. It does recommend maintaining existing buildings and holding the street edge at this location. Two seemingly ringing endorsements for the reuse of the bank building. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next figure is Naomi Mullen, followed by Michael Mullen.
Naomi Mullen, and I live in Bonner. Shady trees, not shady deals. As a firefighter for the city of Pittsburgh for 21 years, I put out many fires and responded to emergencies. I also fought against the closing of Bonner Elementary and other schools along with Teresa Cale Smith. We spoke at multiple school board meetings. We even took a bus to Harrisburg to speak and asked for the state to give more funding. My husband and I took a leadership role in the meetings at Bonner School. The school board closed the school anyway, and our daughter did not get to finish fifth grade there. That was 2001, and the building had sat empty for most of these 20 years since. Now, the school board of directors voted to sell the school under the belief that the developer had community support. All of the four community members who met Gregory Coyle and Pat Morissette enumerated problems and the need for a public community meeting. No one ever claimed to speak for the community. No one claimed support for the developer. This big misunderstanding must stop. If City Council members tell the school board members that they should revisit the decision to sell the building, they may. Instead, the building should be sold to the city for $1 for the purpose of a green space. The misunderstandings of real estate professionals and administrators might really be conflicts of interest. I prefer to believe that sincere, well-meaning public servants and professionals will correct this mistake. Our councilmen, state representative, and prospective mayor have all claimed their support for Bonner to have a green space. We have hundreds of names on our petition which states, "I, the underscore sign below, do not consent to a multi-unit property development at the Bonner School site." Even Tony Mossozzo has signed this. Do the right thing by supporting stable, low-crime neighborhoods. Do not support destabilizing and unwanted changes. The people of Bonner have spoken. Shady trees, not shady deals. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next figure is Michael Mullen, followed by Brittany Riley. I do not see a Michael Mullen, so we'll move on to Brittany Riley.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm Brittany Riley, resident of Pittsburgh and chair of the Pittsburgh Modern Committee of Preservation Pittsburgh, who nominated the former Mellon Bank in East Liberty for historic designation, which I'm commenting on today. As addressed in our nomination, the former Mellon Bank, completed in 1970, is worthy of landmark status for its place in Mellon Bank's exceptional architecture program leading up to and during the 1960s, and for how it reflects the regional and national shift towards styles of modernism in civic and commercial architecture, and that it had an impact and influence on public modern architecture locally. Council, I ask you to acknowledge that the Title XI ordinance does allow for the HRC to discover and articulate applicable criterion that may differ from those which were suggested in the original nomination, so long as the nomination's original content supports the criterion that the commission finds that the building meets. I think it's short-sighted to describe a criterion in our own historic preservation ordinance as a quote catch-all. Criterion seven, a structure's association with important cultural or social aspects in the city, state, region, or country. Our built environment's ability to represent cultural and social aspects and events is a very powerful thing. It's an absolutely irreplaceable thing. Thanks to the content in our nomination, the HRC was able to endorse that Mellon Bank, a Pittsburgh institution that funded the nearby East Liberty Presbyterian Church, achieved its own architecture program that is well worthy of recognition and preservation. In their East Liberty Banking Branch, that's represented in a structure of high integrity with original materials and appearance intact during a time when a streamlined style established a refreshing new aesthetic for everyday use, and it's meaningful to Pittsburgh community members. Council, during the public hearing last week, you heard from a local community member who expressed her own appreciation of the building's unique materials, appearance, and central location, and she shared with you, as we also have, ideas for how it could be repurposed for local and incoming business or community amenities. Why not a banking branch shared with a community center? Why not a tutoring center, a marketplace, a community art gallery that commemorates and celebrates the complex history of the neighborhood? When and where was the community meeting to discuss this potential hosted by ELDI or East Liberties RCO? With time and a path forward, willing developers could be explored and be made aware of this opportunity. We heard from nearly 100 more community members, and we hope that you heard them too. Instead, we're deferring to a building owner who has not been visible or vocal during any point of this process, represented instead by a tenant and their legal counsel. A single-story bank has a single use, and its added parking lot with less than 10 spots is there for use of the bank. It does not enhance the ease of parking in the neighborhood overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next figure is Anthony Mossozzo, followed by Melissa McSwigan.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. I'm Tony Mossozzo, and I am the past president of Bonner Civic Association, and also the ward chairman of the 18th Ward, and I am here to ask for City Council's help. With Anthony Coghill has been helping us with the sale of Bonner School, that the community does not want it sold to be made into apartment buildings. I mean, there was some miscommunication. I was at the meeting that we met with Gregory Coyle in with Pat Marcelli, and he was cold at that meeting, but the five of us had to go back to the community for community approval. And without our knowing, the post gazette posted in the paper that the building was sold. It put us in a bind with everything. So, we're here to stand with our community. We do not want it sold and made into an apartment building. I agree with everybody else's comments, and with Anthony, and then our state representative, Jessica Benham, and our new elected school board member, Jamie, that should be bought by the city and turned into a green space for the neighborhood. So, I really thank you, and I really would like your help and tell your school board members in your districts to help support us for this effort to stop the sale. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Melissa McSwigan, followed by John Rhodes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Good morning. I also am speaking in favor of the former Mellon Bank nomination that had the public hearing last week. I'm responding to a few things that were said at the hearing, and I just want to say that, you know, the process to designate a building in Pittsburgh as a historic landmark is a demanding one and is a bit intimidating, so no one does so on a whim. In comparison to other cities, Pittsburgh has a low number of individual buildings that are locally designated. Pittsburgh has approximately a little bit more than about 100 buildings designated, whereas other cities that we've looked at have more than 300 to more than 1,000 buildings that have been locally designated. And it might surprise people to know that the blockhouse in Point State Park, as well as the Union Trust Building, are not locally designated in Pittsburgh. You know, ideally, though, the list should represent a wide swath of buildings that tell the story of Pittsburgh's people and our development. It would be an outdated notion to think that only the architecturally grand should be on the list. Alternative histories and vernacular architecture should be encouraged. It was also said at the public hearing that the bank is not on a list of surveys of historic buildings. Therefore, it does not mean it's important was the implication. Given the pace of time, things continually shift and need appraisal and reappraisal, just like Victorian buildings, which were once out of favor. As time went by, they've been reappraised and are held in higher regard. More recent buildings that are from 50 years ago are getting continually reappraised and are of interest, and we need to look ahead to help protect them as well. And I would really hate to see, with the loss of this building at a prominent corner in East Liberty, I feel like we lose options to make the extra space available to possibly local businesses, entrepreneurs, community groups. You know, this is just one potential idea. We know that citizens does not need the entire building, but what if we all came together and talked about maybe what could be used with that excess space, and there could be a way forward? I just wanted to mention that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next figure is John Rhodes, followed by Sam Spearing.
Hi, my name is John Rhodes, and I live at 3030 Wigan Street in Polish Hill. I serve as the co-chair of the Housing and Development Committee for the Polish Hill Civic Association, the registered community organization for our neighborhood. I'm here to speak in favor of expanding inclusionary zoning to our neighborhood. Polish Hill has a long history of being a place where families of any income level could find a home, and we want to make sure that the community maintains affordable options. Our neighborhood has an immediate need for inclusionary zoning. Community members are being priced out. For instance, in Polish Hill, the median sale price in the neighborhood from 2015 to 2018 has more than tripled, from $67,500 to $217,500. Many neighbors know someone who has been displaced from the home they were renting or priced out of the opportunity of owning in their neighborhood. We are grateful for what the city is already doing to help ameliorate this problem, most notably through the firesite Community Land Trust Development Project, and we look forward to continuing this kind of great work in the city. But that is one solution to a problem that needs many, and inclusionary zoning is one of those solutions. There are imminent developments that could reshape our neighborhood right now. We want to be able to preserve a balanced approach to development that ensures people of all income levels can find a home. The first iPod, Councilwoman Gross proposed for Lawrenceville has been made permanent for Lawrenceville, and it has proven a success, already creating 40 affordable units. I want to thank Councilwoman Gross for her leadership on inclusionary zoning. I also want to thank Christina Howell and Sam Spearing at the Bloomfield Development Corporation for their help in helping to advocate for inclusionary zoning, and I also especially want to thank our sister community organization, Lawrenceville United, which works so hard in partnership with Councilwoman Gross to bring Pittsburgh's first inclusionary zoning to their neighborhood. Ever since Lawrenceville United began discussing bringing IZ to their neighborhood years ago, we in Polish Hill have discussed at numerous community meetings jealously about bringing IZ to our community too, and we hope with your support, now is the time that can happen. Thank you for your consideration. I also want to say that we're excited about the proposal supported by Democratic nominee Ed Ganey about bringing citywide inclusionary zoning. We want to make sure that we've got coverage in our communities in the interim before that potentially comes into effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sam Spearing, followed by Daniel Sennowalt.
Hi, my name is Sam Spearing. I work as the Housing and Mobility Coordinator for Bloomfield Development Corporation, the registered community organization for the neighborhood of Bloomfield, and I also live in Bloomfield as a renter at 256 South Montalto Street. I'm here today to speak in support of the expansion of inclusionary zoning to Bloomfield and Polish Hill as proposed by Councilwoman Gross. We've seen the success of inclusionary zoning in Lawrenceville, and we want to replicate this tool for Bloomfield as well. We already know that according to data collected by the planning department, 40.84% of renters in Bloomfield are cost burdened, which is more than double the citywide rate of 19.57%. I've seen displacement happening in my own building due to rising rents over the past several months. In February, a city paper reported on a neighbor in my building who received notice that the rent would be increasing almost 40% from $885 a month to $1225 a month. Since then, the majority of the neighbors in my building have been told that they have to move out at the end of their lease. Recently, three of the units that were renting for under $900 a month in February were listed for $1,700 a month. That's an increase in rent of roughly 92% in less than six months. Over the course of the COVID-19 pandemic, I've talked to nurses, service industry workers, childcare workers, and even a few city employees who have struggled to keep up with the rising costs of housing in Bloomfield. Our neighborhood and our neighbors need tools that create new affordable house units in Bloomfield. I ask that council supports Councilwoman Gross in bringing inclusionary zoning to Bloomfield and Polish Hill. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Daniel Sennowalt, followed by Allison Keating.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Danny Sennowalt from Bonner, District 10 of City, in 442 Princeton Avenue. I'm here to speak on the opposition of the sale of the Bonner School for the purpose of rezoning for apartments. I want to thank Anthony Coghill, Jessica Benham, and Ray Fontana for supporting our view on this as not to sell this school and make a green space out of it. So, that's basically, and I'd like to ask each councilperson, the co-author of people in their, the school board members in their district, and make it clear to them that the people in Bonner do not want this building made in apartments. They want it torn down and made a green space out of it. The city picked the school board years ago, took one of the best performing schools in the city and shut it down. I don't know why they did that, but then now it's been their problem ever since they shut it down. Now they want to make it our problem. We don't want the problem. Please, support tearing it down and make a green space. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Allison Keating, followed by Melanie Von Trapp.
Hi, my name is Allison Keating. I live in Manchester neighborhood. I wanted to speak on the proposed bailout for the parking authority that you're supposed to be boarding on today. This seems to be a really egregious idea for what they're having as a temporary problem. This appears to be a somewhat permanent solution to that. There's a 10-year abatement of the $1.9 million payments in lieu of taxes, so that's, you know, about $20 million right there, but then there's a permanent change in the meter revenue sharing. So, it's a reduction from the $18.5 million to $15 million that the city would be getting each year, and instead, the money above that would then be split, so that's a reduction of $1.75 million per year. But that doesn't sunset after 10 years. That continues on. And so, this is really deeply fiscally irresponsible, because these payments are received in lieu of the parking tax dollars that were diverted to the city's pension fund. And this also comes at a time when the parking tax dollars from, you know, from garages has decreased during the pandemic, which again is a temporary problem. So, the assumption that this ballot is necessary is because Parking Authority provides a low-cost parking option downtown. But when, at the Parking Authority meeting last week, they had a resolution where they allowed the director to actually lower the rate to be more quote competitive with the private garages. So, it seems like the market is actually solving the supposed cost issue downtown temporarily. But we've not seen similar enthusiasm from the Parking Authority for solving daily problems like the difficulty of finding parking in high-demand areas, you know, like the Strip, Shady Side, Squirrel Hill. You know, despite copious evidence and studies that have shown that when you dynamically calculate your prices in high-demand areas at high-demand times, this will encourage quicker turnover spaces, which means that more customers are able to park and more people are able to go to businesses. And they've also not chosen to dynamically price for like special events in the North Side, like Steeler Empire Games, and this despite the fact that license light reading technology and the smartphone payment system has increased the meter compliance and revenue and decreased the cost of enforcement. The Parking Authority hasn't uploaded their annual reports from 2019 or 2020, but the report from 2018 says that they have a net asset of $134 million. In 2004, they only had $44.6 million. This, of course, is in stark contrast to every other city authority, none of whom are asking for funds that can be used for whatever they want going forward. It's also notable that the parking garage at Ninth and Penn was recently demolished, and no one has really noticed. The head of the Culture Trust even said that the fact is, there's ample parking downtown. The director of the Parking Authority in that same next Pittsburgh article said that he generally agrees with the assessment, but they don't have a plan to change their development priorities right now, and he thinks that's the trend going forward. I don't believe that's going to change overnight, but then the pandemic happened, and then things did change overnight. So, you know, there's a lot of more creative things that they could be doing that they're not. Developers have continued to add parking downtown.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melanie Von Trapp, followed by our last speaker, Loretta Marburger.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you for your time today. My name is Melanie Von Trapp. I live at 3030 Wigan Street in Polish Hill, and I'm here to speak in support of the proposed expansion of the Inclusionary Zoning Overlay District to our neighborhood. Our neighborhood has a long history of being a place where families of any income level can find a home, and we want to make sure that the community maintains affordable options. So, expanding inclusionary zoning to our neighborhood is one way that we can make that happen. That's why I support Councilwoman Gross's proposal to expand the Inclusionary Zoning Overlay District to Polish Hill. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Loretta Marburger. Follow. Yes, we can hear you now. And now we cannot. You're muted, Ms. Marburger.
Okay, thank you. My name is Loretta Marburger. I am a resident of Bonner Community. I am one of the many residents of this community asking for your support of a green space in place of any kind of structure at the Bonner School site. Parking is already at a premium in this community, especially along the school building. Streets, the residents on these streets are resigned to on-street parking, and a multi-unit structure or any structure that is proposed would only create havoc and a possible hostile environment among residents vying for a parking space. The added traffic to this community would also pose safety issues for residents who walk with their children, for exercise, walking their dogs, or children playing in the streets or in the park across the street, because many of the streets do not have sidewalks. Mr. Coghill, we all thank you for your support and understanding the community's opposition to this structure or any structure being built at this site, and we ask you and the rest of the council for your support in continuing to help us with our need and desire for a green space only. Thank you for everything that you have done so far, and we ask for your continued support for us, to the school board, to ask them to please reconsider the proposal that stands before us now. Thank you, and may you all have a blessed day.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Moving us on to our Standing Committee agenda, and with a quick, please take the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Mr. Kraus.
Mr. O'Connor.
Chair.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Ms. Jossberger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. LaValle Chair.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. Our first, um, committee for today is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. Our first supplemental paper is Bill seventeen fourteen.
Bill seventeen fourteen ordinance amending a supplement in the city of Pittsburgh code Title One, Article Seven, by amending Chapter one sixty-one with respect to procurement procedures for small, non-professional services, service agreements utilized by the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Public Safety Office of Special Events for recreational and instructional purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion.
Discussion, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, so I am wondering if we have someone at the table to talk about kind of the intent here. Kind of if we could just get an explanation of why these contracts, um, you know, what's the problem with the way we're doing it now? What's the change and how that might benefit Parks and Rec? That would be awesome. Is anybody from O M B, maybe?
Trying to scroll through, Councilwoman.
No, I was just doing the same thing.
I don't see anyone. Unless I missed them.
We could, we can get to one.
Oh.
Okay.
Luann Huran is here.
Okay.
I believe.
From Parks and Rec. All right. Well, if that, yeah, that might do it. Sure. Let's have Luann, please.
Well, I saw her.
Yeah. Counsel, can you hear me? I, I am here.
There you are. There you are.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Can you, uh, identify yourselves for listeners?
This is Luann Huran. I'm the Assistant Director of, um, Parks and Recreation.
Great. Um, and Luann, I was just asking for a little bit of, um, of a picture of kind of like, what is the problem been? What kinds of, um, organizations are you trying to do contracts with and how this change will help?
Well, I'm gonna do my best to try and speak with, speak to this piece of, uh, legislation. Um, we've been working for months now with the law department and with the Office of Procurement. And what we're doing here today is we're just trying to amend the city code um, so that we can still come before you with the, um, uh, generic, well, we do, we call the generic, uh, legislation so we can work with the performers and the artist tennis instructors like we always do without having to go and do RFPs with each one of them. Um, the way we were doing it, um, the, the law department and procurement, um, felt that the code needed to be changed. The code one six one, I believe, point oh two, that needed to be amended. And we've been working on it for some time now. And by amending the city code, this will allow us now to continue to come before you with the, um, what I'm referring to as the generic, uh, legislation for the instructors and performers for ten thousand or less like we did earlier this year. And the code will make it possible for us to continue to use that piece of legislation. Um, and it'll change the language in the code. So we won't have to, um, go and do, um, RFPs for artist tennis instructors. Um, because that's what it was going to be if we didn't amend the code, which is what we're asking for today.
Yeah, so that, Luann, I don't mean to put you on the spot. Thank you for, for explaining that. But I, I was, I was kind of looking from someone from O M B, but at least I, I understand your side.
Okay.
Story. And I think it's important for people to understand kind of the things that you've contracted with from Parks and Rec. So you were talking about performers and, um, can you run through that list again? Because I think it's really important for people to understand kind of all you scramble to do in the summers. In the legislation, I see performers, instructors, artists.
Artists, referees, yes. A lot of, mostly a lot of tennis instructors we do. We use like in the summer quite a bit. We could use up to like twenty tennis instructors that we're writing these, uh, mini agreements for. They're like under ten thousand dollars, um, every year, um, that we write. We've been doing this for like twenty years or so now. We do little instructors for balloon artists, face painters. Um, we have people that work at our little summer camps that we maybe write ones for maybe five thousand dollars for little science projects that come in and do. Or you'll see our community enrichment programs, um, roving our carts. People come and do face painting. We write little contracts for them, uh, there's, to name a few.
So the way I'm reading this, it allows you to bundle, um, some contracts together as long as it doesn't exceed the ten thousand dollars.
Yes, yes, they're not really bundled together.
One piece of legislation for like five tennis instructors or something like that.
Yeah, we do separate. We do separate contracts for each one, actually. We don't, they're, we write them for individual people, a contract. Yeah, that's why. We'll write it for each, each tennis instructor will write one contract for that tennis instructor for the year. Under ten thousand.
The legislation is allowing you to bundle them into the resolutions.
Yes, yes, yes. But with this piece of, uh, legislation, we'll write one contract per each instructor. What it does is it allows us, it'll, by changing, this will amend the code. This amends the city.
I know, I'm reading the amendment. I'm reading the code amendment. I've got it up on my screen. I can see the words in the code that you're presenting.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, um, and what it allows you to do is to have an annual resolution that has multiple contracts in one resolution.
Yes, yes, correct, correct.
It says.
Correct.
The stated not to exceed amount for each and specifying the account from which the payments may be made. So, um, that way we're not getting a resolution for each tennis instructor.
Correct. Yes, yes, correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that people understood that. I'm always a little cautious when we change Chapter one sixty-one. Um, and I think there are probably some things that need a lot more conversation, but this one looks perfectly okay.
Okay.
For us, I can tell. Okay, thanks, Luann. That's.
Oh, you're quite welcome, quite welcome.
Thank you. Any other members for discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill seventeen fifteen.
Bill seventeen fifteen, resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter two ten of the city code, the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to accept a donation from First T of Pittsburgh in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for site work at the new clubhouse located in the Bob O'Connor Golf Course at Shinley Park.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill seventeen twenty-one.
Bill seventeen twenty-one in ordinance providing for special conditions for the operation and use of paid sick leave under the Paid Sick Days Act during and due to the crisis presented by COVID nineteen through inclusion in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances of Chapter six twenty-six A, Temporary Emergency COVID nineteen Paid Sick Leave.
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Second.
Oh, Councilman Wilson?
Chair, um, first I'd like to, uh, offer him, uh, make an amendment, uh, make a motion for, uh, to amend the bill. Uh, there was a, amendments were sent over, uh, very late last night. I've been working on this. Um, we incorporated, uh, suggestions by law, um, mostly technical in nature, but, uh, really to strengthen the bill, um, since we're, since this bill moves away from, uh, the, the, um, the emergency act by the state in the city. And, uh, I'll, I'll further explain the bill. Um, but I want to make this motion to, uh, make the amendments. So motion to amend. It was also in the, uh, the packet that Louis sent around to, if any members have questions about, you know, where that is.
Is there a second on the motion to amend?
Second.
Discussion on the amendment? Councilman Wilson?
Um, so I'll just reiterate, just mostly technical in nature. Um, you know, the reason for this new bill was to, um, was to, uh, you know, get away from the one that's expired, uh, create this new bill so that, um, it can withstand the test of time. The chapter is, is changed to six twenty-two B instead of six twenty-two A, so there's no confusion over, um, you know, the one that's, um, now expired and this one. Um, also, there are some other technical amendments that were made, and then also, uh, there are some areas where it's strengthened um, in terms of, uh, the requirement for the employee to, uh, isolate.
Okay. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? If not, all those in favor of amending the bill, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is amended. Any discussion on the bill as amended?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I'd just like to, um, you know, thank member support and also, uh, been working with, uh, thirty-two, uh, SEIU thirty-two BJ on the, um, uh, on, on this bill so that we can provide, um, you know, workers in the city of Pittsburgh, uh, and also, uh, their, uh, their loved ones, their family members, uh, if for some reason, uh, they would continue to, uh, contract uh, or, you know, uh, be required to isolate, uh, over the next year. Uh, really, you know, for me, the, the spirit of this bill, um, really gets to the point of throughout the next year, uh, there would be different, um, you know, this will allow time for the public health officials to continually evaluate the efficacy of, of the vaccines, uh, uh, and also, um, the vaccination process that will have to happen for children on the age of twelve as all, as all school children go to, uh, back to school full-time. At currently, that's the, that's the plan for, for schools. Um, and so they're gonna have their own requirements for, uh, isolation or if, uh, children test positive. And so this, uh, really gets to the, you know, continues on, uh, so that over the course of that year, so that, um, you know, family members, or I'm sorry, caregivers and parents don't have to choose between, uh, you know, taking care of their child and also, um, you know, whether or not they would receive that paycheck or not.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? If not, all those.
Councilman, I, I just want to thank Councilman Wilson for working through this with, um, the Allegany Conference and with the unions because he made sure everybody was at the table. And I think he did a great job, and I just want to thank him for that because I had some concerns and he's, uh, he's managed to work through it. So thank you. Great job, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, bill is recommended. That moves us to Bill sixteen seventy-eight.
Bill sixteen seventy-eight, resolution amending Resolution eight sixty-five, uh, Resolution one thirty to authorize the mayor and director of finance on behalf of the city to enter into an amendment to parking agreements to amend existing designated meter revenue and corporation agreements between the city and the Pittsburgh Public Parking Authority for the purpose of dedicating revenue generated by increased parking meter rates to the city and to further document updates to the parking court corporation agreement, the Melon Square Garage Lease and the Monaga Halo Wharf Lease to authorize a second amendment to parking agreements to further amend the corporation agreement and the Monaga Halo Wharf Lease between the city and the Pittsburgh Public Park and Authority and to amend certain other terms of the amendment to parking agreements.
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Second.
All right, Mr. Chair, um, looks like I'm back up. I wanted to, uh, um, make sure that all members know that there is an amendment that was sent over to the previous, um, uh, the, the previous, um, bill that was agreed upon. Uh, so there was further discussion, so I'd like to, that was also in the packet with Louise, uh, sent over this morning. Um, so, uh, so I'd like to, uh, bring some people to the table to discuss that. So, uh, motion to amend, uh, Bill sixteen seventy-eight. Discussion?
Second.
Seconded. Discussion on the amendment, Councilman Wilson?
All right, well, um, I'd like to have, uh, Executive Director Dave Honorato, the Pittsburgh Parking Authority, and also Chief Kinsey Casey come to the table so we can, uh, talk about this agreement and, um, you know, what's within the body of it. All right, I see.
Seeing Miss Casey with us?
Casey. Here, yes.
I see, I see David's below too, okay. All right, um, if you could please, uh, uh, you know, state your name and, and, uh, so sometimes I forget to do this, so if you could please just address counsel.
Sure thing. Hi, everyone. I'm Kinsey Casey. I'm the chief operating officer for the city of Pittsburgh. You want me to dive in?
Yep, please do.
Great. Um, and then thank you for, uh, also for the public comment. I did, I do want to clarify that what she was speaking about is actually the amendment to this. That's the, um, the parking meter revenue cap that originally was in there. Um, the, it's originally for eighteen point five million and it, we, the original amendment, the original bill was to lower it to fifteen and we've amended that. So the current standing of what we're looking at in this is, um, and, uh, Dave, feel free to, to jump in if you'd like as well. Um, but we have, um, four things that it covers. The first is, um, the authority meeting the debt ratio of one point two five percent. Um, and that, it just helps the parking authority's, uh, bond rating. Um, the second is the ten-year waiver of the one point nine million dollar pilot and, and for ten years. And that is approximately nineteen million dollars, and that is, um, the city's sort of contribution to the lost revenue uh, for the parking authority during COVID. Their total lost revenue was about thirty-four million dollars. Um, so this is not obviously covering all of that, but covering a lot of the lost revenue during COVID that the parking authority saw, obviously, because no one was driving downtown, no one was parking, no one was leaving their houses for quite some time. Um, the third thing is, um, leases at Second Avenue, so a total of two hundred and twenty-five leases at the Second Avenue Parking Authority Lot um, for seventy dollars a month. Um, that covers a hundred, uh, up to a hundred of the fleet vehicles and up to a hundred and twenty-five city employee, um, parking spots. Um, the fourth thing is, and this is where it gets a little confusing, so I'll do my best to explain it. Please feel free to ask questions or Dave, feel free to jump in. Um, but the parking authority, um, in a normal year keeps five, normally four point six million dollars of the parking meter revenues. This would change it to five point six million for four years. So that's another four million dollars to sort of make up for lost revenue, get them over the hump of sort of this COVID uh, crisis that they've seen at the parking authority. Um, so the way that it works is the parking authority keeps the first five point six, uh, in, as proposed in this legislation, um, and, and then enough to cover the operational expenses, credit card fees, that kind of thing. Um, the city would then receive the next eleven point five million dollars in parking meter revenues, which equals the eighteen point five million dollar cap. And anything above that total eighteen point five million dollars would be split fifty percent to the city, fifty percent to the parking authority. So the total fiscal impact to the city, uh, in this legislation, uh, would be tw- about twenty-two million dollars. And that's nineteen of it for the ten, over ten years for the pilot payments and, uh, four million in the parking meter revenue over those four years. I don't know, Dave, if you want to jump in if I missed anything.
Uh, yes. Hello, Council. This is Dave Honor, I'm Dave Honorato, Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority. And thanks, Kinsey. Uh, I think you explained it, went through the amendments, proposed amendments, uh, and covered them, uh, as, as we want to see changed and had discussions with, uh, Councilman Wilson and the city. Uh, we're on board, and I think you explained all. Uh we're on board, and I think you explained all the amendments that are on the front of council today. And we're here, if there's any questions, additional questions or concerns can be addressed.
So um I'll I'll let members ask questions if they have any questions right now. I think you I think the both of you have explained what is in the text of the bill.
Thank you. Uh discussion from other members, Councilwoman Groves, and then Councilman Coghill.
There. Um thank you all for being here, um Chief um Casey and and Director Honorato. Um I'm struggling to follow the sections because the way this reads, there's just the added sections, but you we don't have the total agreement. Usually our amendments have the the total document, and then the sections that are changed are, you know, have strikeouts. But so we we have these kind of blurbs, and that's all that there is. Is that the way it's supposed to be?
So, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Doing an amended agreement, but without the agreement and just the changes.
Right, so we're we're asking counsel for the ability for the mayor to enter into the agreement with the parking authority, and this is the background. Um Dave might be able to say that is a little bit more clearly, but the parking authority co-op is one of those delightful um uh co-ops that has been amended several times, and the document refers back to six different documents. Um and so we are once again amending it, um which we were meant to do in in uh twenty nineteen, I believe it was. Um and sort of COVID took over and it didn't get amended then, so we were meant to to have it amended again. Um and this is the amendment to that.
So what is the, what is the version that's on like the city controller's website? That should be the version that the public can read that we know that so then they can see that we're doing what the agreement says they're supposed to be doing.
So I'll have.
There should be like six different agreements that aren't publicly available, if I'm not mistaken.
They should all be publicly available, and Dave, I I may, I'm exaggerating potentially with six. I'm not quite sure how many amendments there are to the original co-op. Um but I will say it is a very confusing document. Um so we can make sure that what is on the controller's website, it has the full comprehension of all of it.
I mean, the general rule of thumb is an elected official is if you don't understand it, don't vote for it. So if it's confusing for you, I'm sure that I don't know uh what all the parts are, right? So.
I will say the the original.
Can you, can you make it like where the public can see these, the whole document and the changes?
Absolutely, we can, we can do that. I mean, what council is currently voting on is just the ability for the city to enter into the agreement, not actually what's in the agreement. But we obviously want you to know what what is in the agreement. Um so the four changes are the ones that are new.
I actually always object to the fact that we authorize the administration to kind of unrestrictedly negotiate things ahead of time, and I would prefer to have the, I know this is a balance, right? Because there's a lot of diplomacy that has to go into, and the administration has um the authority to negotiate the contracts, but that means we're kind of, we don't wanna give you like totally free reigns, right? So so what we're voting on here is that we would allow you to begin negotiating, but that these languages would absolutely be in there. Am I understanding that?
So you're you're voting on the ability for the administration to enter into the um co-op agreement. This is sort of by background, these four points are the changes that will be in that agree, that co-op agreement. Um so that you're voting on the ability for us to enter into the co-op. Um and and by way of background, uh we've gone through the four changes that we have, so that you know what what's in there.
That is correct, Kinsey.
So these are basically covenants on this authorization. So when the final version comes out, they should have these sections in there.
Absolutely. When when the final version is signed off on, it'll be on the controller's website, and you'll have the the full, the full version in all of its glory.
Right, right. So um I mean, I, we shouldn't have to ask that the current version is on the controller's website, but we have had um some inconsistencies with cooperative agreements. You know, the Parks Conservancy one that we worked on a few years ago. There were thirty or something, and it turns out there were fifty in total, and so that's been updated now so that the public has access to all of those. And so I'm just, you know, probably gonna after this meeting go check and see that it's there.
We'll make sure that the correct one is up there, yeah.
Councilwoman Groves, from the source perspective, the only changes that would be in the final one is what's in front of council today.
Okay, okay, got it. So, alright, so I I I think I understand a little better now. I appreciate your patience with me here. Um and um we can see it, these changes in the legislation, the public can see them, and we're just authorizing you to enter into these negotiations to get this language in there. Uh but we'll also be able to have the current agreement uh publicly available. I'll make sure it's there, and then the public can see the final agreement because while we're telling you this language has to be in there, you also could add other things that we don't know about. Hypothetically, because this is.
I mean hypothetically, we we hypothetically, we could, but these are the the.
With the way we do these authorizations, so uh but I don't have any other questions, and I'm I'm typical voting for today. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion from other members? Councilman Coghill?
Yes, welcome, Director Honorato and Chief Casey. I'm glad you made it here. You know, my question is really just out of curiosity, I guess, more than anything, not questioning, you know, the amendments itself. So we lost thirty-four million, that's since COVID, so we're talking eighteen months, is that sound right?
Uh Councilman Carter, are you talking about the authorities' loss?
Yes.
Yes, that was in uh twenty twenty, thirty-four million.
Okay. Um and I guess my question is, how's it looking? I mean, where, i- is it starting to pick up again?
Uh meters are coming back a little bit, garage facilities are still uh above averaging forty-one percent today. Uh what we need to see happen is coming back slower than we projected are uh the people coming back downtown to work. There's still a lot of remote working going on, and that's what's outside of our control and everyone's control. So uh originally, it was anticipated they would start bringing employees back in April, but as the virus continued on, uh companies extended that through September, so we're we're hoping and hearing from companies that employees may be coming back uh the September last quarter of this year. But we, you know, that's the big unknown right now, but we're still, it's coming back a little slower than we anticipated and projected in our twenty twenty-one budget.
Yep, I think about you when I watched the traffic report, you know, four pit tunnels backed up, they've gotta be going to town apart. So I'm hoping that's on that upswing for you, and that's really my question, David, is really uh so are we structured to absorb next year, say we lose twenty million, you know, or or is our debt gonna be that high, or are we structured now, whereas there was a lot less parking? Would mean a lot less payroll, I mean, how, are we gonna lose thirty-four million in another eighteen months if things wouldn't change? I guess is the question, does that make sense?
Uh yes, I mean, what got us through twenty twenty was we we did drastically cut our uh operating expenses at the authority, but the big one was the uh we refinanced our debt. It was supposed to be, it was in, gonna be paid off in twenty twenty-six. We extended it six years to thirty thirty-two and dropped our debt service payment in twenty from about sixteen point two million down to roughly just under two million dollars. Uh so our debt is relatively stable for next year. Uh but prior to the pandemic, our garages were at ninety percent or higher utilization, and it's a forty-one today, you know, we'll have to keep monitoring it, but uh we're on the right trend heading up, but it's a slower pace than we anticipated.
Yeah, yeah, I I think so as well. Okay, no, that's it for me. I was just inquiring about that.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Any other members? Councilman Wilson?
If no other members have um comment, I just wanted to make final comment about. Um yes, I appreciate um Executive Director Dave Honorato for managing the the past um year. It's been um, you know, difficult for all authorities, uh but just, you know, being on the parking authority board and and seeing how uh they've been managing it, I just wanna commend them for that, and then also I appreciate um Chief Casey being involved in this agreement. Uh as you can see, it's quite convoluted with all these old agreements, and I and I, you know, that was some of my questions when we're talking about this is, how do I see the original full uh agreement, so um so I'm looking forward to hopefully cleaning that up too. If we can, if we can do that, because that's, that'd be essential for the public. So I appreciate everyone's time uh on this so that we can um, you know, having a uh, the parking authority provides a lot of revenue for the city. And uh, you know, it's necessary that we keep them uh safe from any sort of uh risk at the, you know, from their debt ratio, so they can meet their demand. I'm I'm sorry, so they can meet what the, what they need to with um, you know, with that debt ratio number.
Thank you. Any further members on the amendment? If not, all those in favor of amending, say aye. Any opposed? The bill is amended. Any discussion on the bill as amended? If not, all those in favor of the amended bill, say aye. Any opposed? The bill receives an affirmative recommendation. That moves us to our new papers, the first being bill sixteen ninety-one.
Bill sixteen ninety-one, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of DuKane Light Company in the amount of seven thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty-six cent in settlement of a claim for damage to Wooden Light Pole at the intersection of Queenston and Farland Streets by a city, by a city environmental services vehicle on February twenty-seventh of twenty twenty.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Chair.
Councilman Coghill?
No, I just wanted to say, no surprise, South Hills with our snowy streets, and we're taking our telephone calls on a weekly basis over here, so just wanted to add that, thanks.
Alright, um all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen ninety-two.
Bill sixteen ninety-two, resolution providing for the sale of certain properties consisting of vacant lots acquired by the city at tax sale twenty-one twenty-eight Wilson, twenty-one thirty, twenty-one thirty-four, twenty-one thirty-six, and twenty-two hundred, twenty-two ten, twenty-two eighteen Wilson Avenue, and thereafter authorizing the execution of a quick claim deed conveying all of the city's right, title, and interest in into said properties to Blight to Light Incorporated.
Motion to approve.
With discussion, I'm uh I need some, one of you to please make an amendment. There is a technical amendment. The, where we need to strike Blight to Blight Incorporated and instead put Perry Hilltop Farm LLC to accurately reflect the purchaser.
Yeah, motion to amend.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Any opposed? The bill is amended. Uh thank you for that. Any discussion on the bill as amended?
Can we hear a little bit about it?
Sure, these are properties that are being sold. However, the the bill came over um saying that they would, they're, the properties were being sold to Blight to Light Incorporated, but the actual organization on the north side that's purchasing them is Perry Hilltop Farm LLC. And so we needed to amend it to accurately reflect who was purchasing these lots.
And have we heard about Perry Hilltop Farm before?
Yes.
Feel like, it sounds wonderful. Is it a farm?
It's a mix of green space and affordable housing.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill receives affirmative recommendation. That moves us to bill sixteen ninety-four.
Bill sixteen ninety-four, resolution further amending resolution number six forty-seven, adopting and approving the twenty twenty-one capital budget the twenty twenty-one CDBG program and the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six capital improvement program by adding seven million seventy-nine thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cent to reflect the allocation of emergency rental assistance to funds from the Treasury Department and authorizing a subsequent agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Bill was recommended. Bill sixteen ninety-five.
Bill sixteen ninety-five, resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Finance to enter into a license agreement with Veterans Police of Washington Boulevard to allow the performance of pre-development survey work on designated city property in order to facilitate the construction of a mixed-use building, including housing units and recreational facilities for homeless veterans.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen ninety-six.
Bill sixteen ninety-six, resolution amending resolution number three forty, vacating a portion of Caldwell Street and portions of Our Way in the Third Ward Sixth Council District of the city by extending the expiration date of the payment from the property owners to the treasury of the city from seven hundred and thirty days to nine hundred and ten days from the effective date of the resolution, August first of twenty nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. We now need a motion to approve the invoices.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. When abstention invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the intra-departmental transfers? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? The transfers are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? P cars are approved. That moves us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor. One supplemental paper, bill seventeen sixteen.
Bill seventeen sixteen, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into an agreement with Allegheny County to receive funding for a hazardous material incident response in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Uh new papers, bill sixteen ninety-seven.
Bill sixteen ninety-seven, resolution amending resolution number eight forty-eight, which authorized the mayor and director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into an amended professional services agreement with Saint Mort's Security Services, Inc., for security guard services in order to increase compensation in accordance with applicable collective bargaining wage rates. Compensation under said amended agreement shall be in an amount not to exceed three million three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars with annual not to exceed amounts as set forth below for each respective budget year subject to the availability of funds in annual council appropriations at rates in compliance with and subject to any applicable requirements, including but not limited to collective bargaining commitments and the city of Pittsburgh service worker prevailing wage ordinance.
Motion approved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen ninety-eight.
Bill sixteen ninety-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Center for Police Research and Policy House within the University of Cincinnati to engage in a process and outcome evaluation of training and technical assistance as part of the academic training to inform police responses initiative.
Motion approved.
Any discussion?
Brief discussion.
Councilwoman Strasburger?
Yeah, hi, I uh thank you. I would like to learn a little bit more about what we're expecting out of. Yeah, hi. I, uh, thank you. I would like to learn a little bit more about what we're expecting out of this, the outcomes.
Uh, I don't see public safety on, is somebody on?
This is Assistant Director Schmidt. Um, I'll do my best. I just have a high level of knowledge of this, um, initiative. Um, it is a national initiative with the Bureau of Justice on a federal level to provide additional training to, uh, all of our officers um, for more effective interactions with, uh, services to individuals with behavioral health issues and or intellectual development issues.
Assistant Director Schmidt.
Like I said, this is actually.
I'm also on. Please, please let me know if you want me to fill in. I apologize.
Sure. I didn't see you around Laura. You probably have a little more detail on this than I do. So go right in.
Yeah, I, um, happily. Hello, Council. This is Laura Dragoski. I'm the manager of the Office of Community Health and Safety, and I've been working with the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police on this opportunity. So this is a technical assistance opportunity to enhance our current crisis intervention team training. So that's something that the city has been doing for some time. Uh, but we're looking to refresh that training so that officers are getting more intensive training around, uh, as, as Director Schmitz, Schmidt said, uh, working with people living with intellectual disabilities, uh, individuals who are on the spectrum, uh, people who may be in a mental or behavioral health crisis. Um, but there's also some other elements that we're really excited about, including uh, sort of the incremental step of developing more of the, the highly trained crisis responder teams uh, so that we would have officers, uh, who are, um, receiving this enhanced training around crisis response, working with other providers in the community, and finally looking toward developing a co-responder program. Uh, we're really excited about this part because it's not something that we've seen nationally. This would be a program whereby the, the, any of the co or alternative response teams that the city brings on would receive training, we would hope, from the bureaus of public, uh, within public safety around communication, mutual respect, safety. There would be co-training and scenario development. And the hope is that as we move toward having more co and alternative response in the city that we're being respectful of all of our public safety professionals and all of these other professionals that will be, you know, helping, uh, our residents. So this is, um, a really exciting opportunity for us to build the capacity we have internally and also support our partners. And I'm, I'm, along with Director Schmidt, I'm very happy to answer any question, additional question.
Thank you. That's, that's a helpful overview. I am trying to get a little bit of a finer point understanding of the breadth of this. So it sounds like it's mostly centered on crisis response teams and the co-responder model that we're setting up, but will this training, um, uh, in some way be able to be offered to or impact, um, all officers? Because I understand that our capacity is such that, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but our capacity is such that in some cases, those who might benefit from, say, a co-responder model or, um, a crisis response team might not always get that, that set of trained professionals. They might get, um, responding officers that have gone through, you know, many different types of trainings, but I wanted to see whether this would be offered to all officers, all responding staff at some point.
Councilperson Strasburger, that's a, that's a great question. So even right now, there, there's currently, well, there was a sort of a hiatus during the pandemic, but, uh, Officer Matchlik, who is a wellness officer in the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, he's been working on, um, re-rolling out the CIT or Crisis Intervention Team Training that has lasted, it was been in, in, you know, in process for years. I know that Chief Kudrav and, uh, Chief Schubert are great, um, advocates for that training. So it would be, you know, we have every intention, and this is certainly the Bureau's decision, but I know that they have every intention of continuing to make training available to all officers and ensuring that it's, it's current, um, and very robust. But then there would be additional training to the crisis officers. And as you mentioned, a lot of this is predicated on dispatch. So the way a, a call is dispatched from nine-one-one dictates who responds and how they respond. Um, and that's, you know, something that I know that the county is working hard on, on ensuring that there's sufficient nuance in those dispatch calls, uh, dispatch calls to be able to send the right responder. Um, in fact, I'm on a phone call right now with our partners at DHS talking about that. So, uh, yes, the, the goal is, is more, not less. So more training opportunities and resources for everyone. And then for those that would be participating in the crisis, uh, response teams, uh, to continue to invest in their ability to do this uh, with the recognition that we're going to continue to move to the right responder, alternative responder model.
Thank you. Those are all the questions I have right now. That helps me understand it better.
Thank you. Other members?
Mr. Lovell.
Councilman Burgess.
Um, Laura, um, many years ago, we had, this is not our first time partnering with the University of Cincinnati. In fact, um, probably twelve years ago, some of the council members, I, I only say that for institutional knowledge, some of the council members weren't, weren't, um, on board yet. But our original and the, the, the foundation of our group violence program was modeled after the Cincinnati model. It was the Cincinnati industry to reduce crime, and then we produced the Pittsburgh industry to reduce crime. And so University of Cincinnati has been in this work for many, many years and has, um, is one of the leading institutions of this preventative policing activity work. And so, um, I am, I am, I am, have not been talking to them recently, but over the years, um, Dr. Kennedy, Dr. Um, Chris Kennedy, um, was also their consultant for many years. And so there is us, um, already, um, a relationship between Cincinnati and our, uh, police department. And so I am, I am, um, excited to see that we're continuing to partnering with them because I know of their great work, um, uh, at the university and, uh, your Cincinnati Police Department, and I'm glad we're bringing some of those best practices, uh, in training back to Pittsburgh. Thank you very much, Laura.
Thank you, Reverend Burge.
Any further members? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Uh, Bill sixteen ninety-nine.
Bill sixteen ninety-nine, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Green Gear's petty cabs in an amount not to exceed eight thousand five hundred dollars for litter and waste control services provided for the city Independence Day events on July fourth of twenty twenty-one.
Motion approved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. Uh, two new papers, Bill sixteen eighty-seven.
Bill sixteen eighty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and directors of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Peoples Natural Gas Company LLC to grant a permanent easement and temporary easement to install and maintain natural gas pipelines and necessary accessories within the Diamond Street parking lot located at Fifth Avenue and Diamond Street in the Central Business District.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill seventeen oh four.
Bill seventeen oh four, resolution granting a vacation of an unopened portion of Ingleside Avenue laid out in the Inglewood Place Plan of Lots as recorded as page thirty-one, thirty-one, page two in the tenth ward, ninth council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. One new paper, Bill sixteen ninety.
Bill sixteen ninety, resolution amending resolution two sixty-three, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a professional services agreement and or a contract with Ceridian Human Capital Management, Inc. for a citywide time and attendance system by increasing the not to exceed amount by eighty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars for additional reporting support and by updating the JDE account streams.
Motion to approve. Discussion.
Second.
Councilman Wilson. Sorry, I hope everyone doesn't mind. I don't actually know if it's supposed to be, uh, Councilman Coghill or me, you know, before, after committee that goes for Councilman Kraus if he's not here. Um, but I just wanted to ask the director a question about this, uh, bill. Do we have Director Manuel? If not, I can get my question answered before, um, the final, the final vote.
Do not see her, Councilman.
Okay. I don't want to hold up the meeting.
Okay. Any other members for discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. First supplemental papers, Bill seventeen seventeen.
Bill seventeen seventeen, resolution further amending resolution number seven ninety-six entitled, resolution adopting and approving the twenty fourteen capital budget in the twenty fourteen CDBG program and approving the twenty fourteen through twenty nineteen capital improvement program by reducing West Ohio Street Bridge by one thousand one dollar and nineteen cents and increase in demolition of condemned buildings by one thousand one dollar and nineteen cents.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill seventeen twenty.
Bill seventeen twenty, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, zoning Articles one through nine, Title Four, Article Three and Title Thirteen, zoning chapter thirteen oh one, making various amendments to the zoning code related to storm water management.
Uh, motion to hold for public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill be held for cable cast public hearing. Uh, Bill fourteen forty-eight.
Bill fourteen forty-eight, resolution approving a new institutional master plan under the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, zoning Article Two, Chapter nine oh five, Section nine oh five oh three D and Article Seven, Chapter nine twenty-two, Section nine twenty-two twelve E for the University of Pittsburgh named Institutional Master Plan dated April twenty twenty-one on property zone EMI Educational Medical Institution District, Fourth and Fifth Wards, Council Districts Number Three, Six, and Eight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I want to thank Councilman Strasburger for shepherding this process. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Uh, Bill fifteen thirty.
Bill fifteen thirty, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, zoning Article One, Section nine oh two oh three zoning map by changing from P Parks to DNI Neighborhood Industrial, a portion of one parcel in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System, twentieth ward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen twelve.
Bill sixteen twelve, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title eleven of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the East Liberty Mellon Bank located at sixty-one, twelve Penn Avenue in East Liberty in the eighth ward of the city, the owner's agent is opposed to the nomination.
Uh, motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Councilman, would you like to make comment?
Yeah, uh, three quick things. I would, I would ask my colleagues to vote no on this nomination for three basic, we were four basic reasons. As you know, I have always been vehemently opposed to nominations that are done, um, over the owner's, um, objection. Um, number two, all of the community groups in East Liberty oppose the nomination, both East Liberty Development Corporation and, um, the Homewood, um, the Village Collaborative. Um, the people who nominated are not of East Liberty. They have absolutely nothing to do with the community. They are outside people. Um, they nominated a structure, um, for reasons and gave it to a historical review commission. The reasons that they nominated, the historical review commission rejected and then found a catch-all saying that it was consistent with other buildings. Yet the other buildings that they compared it to are also not nominated and are not historic. Um, and so I think this is a problematic nomination. Um, the community that it's in does not want it. Um, I think that, um, we should not have, and again, this is, um, a form of elitism that I despise, is when outside people who neither own the building nor live in the community decide what's in the best interest of the community. Last but not least, the building is already partially demolished. It's, it already started being demolished when it was nominated. It was simply nominated to keep it um, from being demolished and the new bank to be built. Um, there is no revenue or vehicle for its restruct, for its restoration. And so, um, um, for all those reasons, I, I would, um, ask my colleagues, and I am, you know, against it. It is in East Liberty in my district. Um, so I'm against it. The community is against it. The community groups are against it, and, um, the owner is against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I'm, will be supporting this nomination for a variety of reasons. Um, when I had a historic structure in my district that was supported, nominated by the community groups, supported by the community, uh, supported by the residents, uh, Councilman Burgess voted against it. So he doesn't seem to apply his principles, um, to himself. So, um, what I see happening for our historic status of our historic properties, I think is beyond this kind of, um, personal, um, opinions. Uh, I think it's important that we step back and realize that we are allowing the demolition of historic properties at a, uh, what appears to me a faster rate, um, than cities that we compare ourselves to. Um, I think it was a very good point that we heard in public comment today and then the other testimony that other cities have preserved more of their historic structures than we have. Um, I think we've taken it for granted because for decades, nothing changed. And so we were kind of lucky. Uh, there weren't corporate bank owners coming in to try to put their cookie cutter suburban plans down in the middle of our historic neighborhoods because nobody was building anything. There really was, there was no development and there was no redevelopment. Now that we see very intense market activity, very intense development activity, we need to be more mindful of keeping what we value. Um, and I'll also, I want to take a moment to talk as a, um, a lapsed sociologist. As most of you know, I have half a dissertation written in historical sociology from a very long time ago. And what I observe is that most of us think things are historical um, when they are from, you know, a, a few decades from before, um, our own life. So, you know, you talk to someone in their eighties, um, and they only think things from maybe nineteen hundred or so are old. You know, tell them something from the nineteen forties or fifties is old and they just find that preposterous. Um, so, um, you know, my favorite old architecture is a house like I live in now, which is a nineteen-ten, nineteen-teens house. I was like kind of nineteen twenties houses. I was born in the nineteen sixties. Well, guess what? Today's voters, today's homeowners, today's residents in a lot of our city neighborhoods were born in the two thousands. Right? I mean, it's, it's twenty twenty-one. You could be born in two thousand and you're, you're twenty-one years old. Um, uh, you know, and fifty years before that gets you to right around nineteen sixty. So, right? I mean, nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties architecture. And so this mid-century architecture, just like we've all noticed, mid-century furniture has been extraordinarily popular, uh, for more than ten years now. Um, is historical to our younger residents. And they're not even very young. They're just younger than we are. Um, so I don't think we should be ascribe. So I don't think we should be ascribing our frames of reference. I think the code is written that way and it isn't bending the rules or finding a catch-all as the, as some people say. It's written that way so that we really understand that history keeps moving forward and that we do respect our history for future generations and not for past generations. And so I think it's fantastic that this bank has been nominated. I think it's really something we need to do more of. And we've been saying for a very long time, yes, we do need to write the, to rewrite these rules. I have had my constituents propose that we declare every building, every single building in the city de facto historic if it's more than fifty years old. And some other places have done that. So that'll really, really drive some people wild, I think, but it's worthy of consideration. Again, we've been lucky. We've been really fortunate that the wrecking balls just weren't there for decades. But the wrecking balls are there now and it's just sometimes those wrecking balls are just for somebody's profit inconvenience and it's not for the community's well-being or for future generations' well-being. So I'm definitely supportive today and I hope that we continue this conversation and that we don't allow for-profit actors like the for-profit developers who are tearing down residential buildings to build new for their own profit and not, again, over the community's concerns to do the same thing here, right? This bank doesn't need to just put its convenient cookie cutter plan down in the middle of a historic neighborhood. So, thank you, appreciate your time, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill.
Yes, thank you. You know, I have a lot of respect for historic preservation. My own house was from eighteen ninety and I restored it as it was way back when. So, and I agree, I don't want to lose these structures that are worth saving. However, some time ago, I decided to abstain on all historic, you know, designations. And it's not because, um, has anything, and I went to callers to know, it's not because, you know, I don't believe in historic preservation. What I don't believe in, and I was wanting to call a post-agenda on this many, many months ago, then COVID came, I guess, I'll blink COVID. So, um, so, so with our historic preservation, it's the process. And, and you know, I had a lot of questions about it over some properties that we had designated in the past. I didn't think some things were quite right there. So that is why I'm abstaining, not because I don't believe in the process or in historic preservation. So I will be abstaining today, thanks.
Any further members first round, Councilman Wilson?
Yes. So, you know, in the public hearing that we had regarding this building, a lot of questions circling around the importance of this structure. And I just want to make it known that it was selected to be before us because it was, the criteria was that it was, it met the criteria of essentially that because it was built during the, whenever Penn Circle, you know, with the failed urban renewal of Penn Circle and also on the north side, we had one of those as well, the Allegheny Circle, which my grandparents lost their home. That was the reason that it was deemed historic, that it was in that timeframe and that it was, um, you know, that that was somehow the reason that we would designate it. So that's why I question, you know, should we be celebrating these structures that essentially remind us of the time that, you know, families were forced out of their homes in the name of development? Now, you know, should be noted that this is one of many other structures that are in our portfolio that, you know, Mellon commissioned different architects to, for the modern architecture. And so, you know, there are others that weren't part of a failed urban renewal that, you know, should be saved and I think are quite more unique in, in terms of architecture, modern architecture. If you look at the one on Fifth and Craig, about, yeah, Fifth and Craig, the PNC has a nice carport. I mean, that's, you know, that is one that I'm in favor of. And I think we should be more proactive in terms of designating these, not whenever, you know, someone walks past and sees that they're trying to, you know, accommodate. What I'm hearing is what the community wants. So a local branch that, you know, you know, going off of what Councilman Burgess said, you know, ties into even residents nearby, you know, new homes that were, you know, federal money and came into to, for the housing choice neighborhoods development. You know, a development that was, you know, extensive and provides long-term affordability for that neighborhood and for them to have a branch that, you know, what I sat through for the, the public hearing would be what they want. And to actually have this type of renewal would be more in line with what I like to see on the north side as well. As we continue to, to change what is the wrongs that have been done to Allegheny Circle, I think it's important to, you know, to move forward and, and respect the community's wishes. So with that, I'm going to vote no today and I respect all comments and, and I, I met with the, the designate, the, the people who put this up for designation and, and I want to partner with them on other structures. But, um, but today I'm going to vote no on this.
Thank you. Any other members first round? If not, we're ready. Councilman Coghill, second.
Yes, no, I, just to add on to what Councilwoman Wilson just said. Councilwoman Wilson, that's part of the problem right there. We are, you know, a preservation, we should be actively pursuing these sites, not waiting until the wrecking ball's coming and then putting them in front of us. And now it's a problem, it's a problem for the so-called developer and it's a problem for the preservation. So, you know, I'd like, and maybe it's a lack of resources, I don't know. Maybe we could get more resources toward them in the future where they can go out and actively, you know, set claim or, you know, designate these properties where when they come to us, it's already done. I, you know, I feel like the problem comes to us and, you know, it's not fair to us that, to be put in a position. So we're going to act like a, you know, preservation, let's go out and actively pursue the ones that we want to save. That's all.
Thank you. All right, can we take a roll call vote, Madam Plur?
Reverend Burgess.
So.
Mr. Coghill.
I'm staying.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
No.
Mrs. Cal Smith.
No.
Ms. Strasburger. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No.
Mr. Wilson.
No.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
No.
On Bill sixteen twelve, ayes, one, noes, six, one abstention.
Thank you, the bill receives a negative recommendation. That's it, moves us to Bill seventeen hundred.
Bill seventeen hundred, resolution for the amending resolution number eight fifty-five entitled, resolution adopting and approving the twenty twelve capital budget, the twenty twelve CBBG program and approving the twenty twelve through twenty seventeen capital improvement program by reducing Wesley AME charities by two thousand dollars and increasing demolition of condemned buildings by two thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill seventeen oh one, can we read seventeen oh one, seventeen oh two together?
Yes. Bill seventeen oh one, resolution for the amending resolution number seven seventy-two entitled, resolution adopting and approving the twenty thirteen capital budget and the twenty thirteen CBBG program and approving the twenty thirteen through twenty eighteen capital improvement program by reducing various CBBG line items by seven thousand thirty-two dollars and twenty-one cents and increase in demolition of condemned buildings by seven thousand thirty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. Bill seventeen oh two, resolution for the amending resolution number seven ninety-six entitled, resolution adopting and approving the twenty fourteen capital budget, the twenty fourteen CBBG program and approving the twenty fourteen through twenty nineteen capital improvement program by reducing various CBBG line items by twenty thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents and increase in demolition of condemned buildings by twenty thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills receive affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Councilman Burgess, one supplemental paper, Bill seventeen thirteen.
Bill seventeen thirteen, resolution submitting the recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to rename the ballpark at Fineview Park, the Kenneth W. Kenny Menton Senior Memorial Ball Field.
That needs, it needs to be held for public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Motion to hold for public hearing?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be held. That moves us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross, first new papers, Bill sixteen eighty-eight.
Bill sixteen eighty-eight, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for proposed land development located at the intersection of East Jefferson Street and Lane Way and parcel number twenty-three F seventy-eight, twenty-three F seventy-four and twenty-three F seventy-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen eighty-nine.
Bill sixteen eighty-nine, resolution amending resolution three ninety-five to allow execution of a deed by and between the URA and the city for the cell block twelve, key lot one fifty-four in the sixteenth ward, Council District Three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill seventeen oh seven.
Bill seventeen oh seven, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine Zoning Article One, Section nine oh two oh three zoning map and Article Three Overlay Zoning Districts, Chapter nine oh seven, Development Overlay Districts, Section nine oh seven oh two iPod, interim planning overlay district by adding a new Section nine oh seven oh two L to establish a new interim planning overlay district for the inclusionary housing interim planning overlay district.
Motion to private discussion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Firstly, I have to amend by substitution. We had additional meetings with planning over the last week and the community leadership and the kind of more direct path is to just add Polish Hill and Bloomfield into the kind of, what's called the inclusionary zoning overlay, we, we, we keep referring to it as the Lawrenceville overlay, but planning was clever in writing it away in a way that other neighborhoods can adopt that overlay. So it's an overlay kind of template. So first of all, motion to amend by substitution. And you were emailed this with the other amendments this morning by Louise at about nine forty-five.
Second.
Any dis- discussion on the amendment, Councilwoman Gross? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill has been amended. Any discussion on the bill as amended?
I may. So as I mentioned before, and as you heard public comment, the map attached to the legislation just follows the neighborhood boundaries. And so very similarly to how we did all of the Lawrenceville footprints, this is just the entire Polish Hill footprint and the entire Bloomfield footprint. They've, both of the neighborhoods have been really waiting years. They really wanted to be adopted, especially Bloomfield lobbied hard to be adopted into the first overlay. And so this is long overdue. And as I mentioned before, there have been lots of public process around affordability in Bloomfield. So much kudos to the Bloomfield Development Corporation, which is the recommend, uh, the, uh, what's it called, the community, what are the RCOs called again?
Register Community.
Got it, thank you, appreciate it. For the neighborhood, there have been meetings I've attended with four hundred people consistently testifying for the entire time for affordability at major sites. They ensued on more intensive communication specifically about housing affordability. I know that the BDC has also done a housing inventory. We're currently working on other parts of master planning for Bloomfield, but the neighborhood is, has very clearly expressed its desire to move forward quickly with the inclusionary zoning. So we're looking forward to a robust public process. Just a reminder to the public, there is always robust public process around zoning changes. There will be direct mails to all households, there will be lots of public meetings and chances for public testimony. But we look forward to the process starting with your support. So now I need to motion for, uh, a hold for a report and recommendation to the planning patient. So motion to hold.
Before, before, can I make comments?
Absolutely.
Before, if you don't mind.
I'm done.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Yep.
I'll be brief. As you've all heard this meeting, Councilwoman Gross and I agree on some things and disagree on some things, but I think her work on exclusionary zoning has been commendable and I have fully agreed with her, her process, her advocacy and her leadership. And I want to commend her for that. I also want to just use this moment to at least explain why, I, I, I think, why, I, I, I don't want to speak for Councilman LaBonne, speak for himself, but at least why I. I think he too, I have not proposed, although I have written it more than once, a citywide exclusionary zoning plot process.
Inclusionary?
Inclusionary, that's it, it's inclusionary, that's why exclusionary, inclusionary, right? Inclusionary, thank you. Inclusionary zoning for the city. Is because we are fearful, I, actually I have been quiet about Lawrenceville because I was hoping that, you know, it would just quietly happen. It is my understanding and unfortunately I think we should prepare ourselves now for litigation. We're going to get sued now and it's going to be a long drawn-out battle, which hopefully we'll win and hopefully once and we'll settle this once and for all as to whether or not we can, we can do inclusionary zoning in our city and in our state. The Affordable Housing Task Force recommendation was to look into it, but even at the task force, we were, we were unsure as to whether or not we can actually do this. And so I simply want to commend her and say the reason that I have not followed suit is not because I'm not in favor of this. I was just trying to delay, which I knew would be the inevitable, that the more we did this, the more this would attempt a lawsuit. So I think in the next few months, I don't know when exactly, but if it has not happened yet, it will happen in the near future. There'll be lawsuits and then hopefully a judge will, will determine what we can and cannot do. And as soon as that happens, if it's in our favor, I will and join Councilman Lavelle and other members to be much more aggressive in setting up these inclusionary zone overlays. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill, then President Smith.
Thank you.
I agree. First, I just want to say congratulations, Councilwoman Gross. It's not often you set out to, you know, do something as major as this and it comes to fruition and seems to be a success for you. And it's like you're on the front lines of affordable housing. So, you know, I'm, I'm happy to be part of that and I'm happy to support it today. You know, the, and it's not often you have other neighborhoods wanting to chime in and be part of it. So, so good for you, it's, uh, it's good to see it's successful. And when we talk about affordable housing, this is something in black and white that. in black and white that I think we all can understand. And I think it was forty or so units that, you know, through, throughout Lawrenceville at this point. So, so with the enthusiasm of the neighborhoods, I have no doubt it will be successful, at least in your district. But with that being said, I don't believe it's for every district. Um, you know, when those talks come, if those talks come, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. But I just wanted to congratulate you on the success. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Smith.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, yes, I actually want to say also congratulations to Councilwoman Gross. This is longer overdue, uh, for your district. And I think that it's, um, I congratulate you. I know that you've really championed this, uh, and done a great job. But I again, agree with Councilman Coggo, um, that this is not for all districts. Our district has probably more affordable, it has more affordable housing than we have anything. And what we actually need is some market rate housing. So it, I, I just want to say it's not for every district. It's not for every neighborhood. But it may be parts of neighborhoods or parts of our district that might, might, uh, it might be great for. But I just want to make sure that when we're having these conversations that we keep in mind, not all districts are the same, not all neighborhoods are the same. Uh, we have very, you know, different distinct neighborhoods in our district. Thank you. Congratulations, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Any other members? If not, um, Councilman Burgess is right that I have also looked at, um, both citywide as well as neighborhood specific inclusionary zoning. I even spoke with Councilwoman Gross about it. Um, and there was interest in doing it for the hill and potentially being able to also just sort of can, because it was contiguous to Polish Hill, sort of easily coming over. Um, but what I do want to just, and I want to just double check, Councilwoman Gross. This is for when you're building a certain, a certain, a certain amount of units then requiring a certain, a certain amount to be affordable, correct?
So, yeah, do you want me to answer?
Sure.
So, um, only if the development is twenty units or more. So then the requirement kicks in. So let's say it was twenty units. So at ten percent of the units would only be two units, right? So, um, it's, I, I've said this before in, um, you know, the media or in interviews. This one was really crafted for the needs that Lawrenceville was having at the time, uh, which is that they had lost so many affordable units that were not in multi-units. They weren't in big buildings that had been imploded. They weren't in big, that were not multi-units at all. They had lost so many affordable apartments in those single family homes. Um, and those were not going to be gotten back because there was a family living in them. Right? So what had been four, three or four affordable apartments in one of those, you know, Victorian houses in Lawrenceville was, um, now back into single family and, and hundreds and hundreds of apartments were lost that way, almost invisibly. But the opportunity there was in the big footprint. So moving forward, how to gain affordable units back using that kind of market pressure that was there wanting to buy, um, big parcels and build big multi-units. Um, this is the perfect tool for that. It's not the tool for all affordability. It's not the tool for every kind of, of, um, threat that is driving up prices. Uh, but it is a great tool here. And so what we see in these hot market neighborhoods is that where there's already a big parcel, where if someone could zone for multi-units, there's, um, opportunity there. But also, you, it's amazing but true that, that developers are so intent on building that they're also buying multiple parcels and trying to combine them. Almost like we used to fund our URA to do for us, right? Though the market is doing that and these overheated neighborhoods. Um, so there really is a threat that this is the right tool to meet. Um, otherwise, what you see happening is that we risk creating these new, allowing these neighborhoods, allowing the market to make these neighborhoods only for high-income people. Right? That almost every home and almost every apartment, uh, the, the prices are driven up. And so there is the, that when we say lack of affordability, we really mean that there's, they're not, that, that we're losing the mix of incomes of the households in the neighborhoods. Um, so it's really needed urgently. And also point out by, as I mentioned in the, when I was talking about the amendment, that the way planning has set up what is now called the IZO, the inclusionary zoning overlay is any neighborhood can join in that's, you know, wants to without the continuity, which is, I think, really an interesting difference. So I really appreciate their, their creative work there.
Thank you. So, so your very detailed answer actually got to the point that I was going to make.
I just totally stole the floor from you.
No, 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 it's fine. I can be very brief now. Um, I was simply going to say that this is indeed one very useful tool. But to many of the speakers who got on, this won't actually address their concern about increase in rent, increase in housing value. It doesn't do that. And so we as a body have to look for other tools similar to this one to address a lot of the issues that many residents in our cities are really worried about, which is the increase in rent. Like even if you look in the Hill District, one, the largest problem facing our housing stock is the fact that the rents are skyrocketing. And so we can actually track where people are having to move and inclusionary zoning doesn't address that. And unfortunately, last time I looked at it, we legally can't do things like rent control here. Um, so we gotta, we'll have to get creative, um, to find other tools. But I look forward to supporting you on this and then working with you to address those other concerns that people are really calling in about. With that, um, your motion is to send to Planning Commission for review and recommendation?
Hold for a report and recommendation from Planning Commission. I don't think we, we had a second yet.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We, we look forward to, uh, hearing their report and recommendation. Thank you very much. That does leave exhaust our agenda. Yes, it does. Um, we do have a number of meeting announcements. This afternoon at one PM, council will hold an executive session with the city's law department relative to ongoing legal matters with Saint Vianney Church. Next week, council will be Tuesday, July twenty-seventh at ten AM for the last regular legislative meeting before we go on, on recess. To register for this meeting, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage by nine AM Tuesday morning. And you may also register by calling four one two two five five two one three eight. Also, next Tuesday at one thirty PM, council will hold a cablecast post-agenda discussion with publicly funded charter schools to discuss their current and future plans to increase academic achievement. And next Wednesday, July twenty-eighth at one thirty PM, council will hold another cablecast post-agenda discussion with the Board of Education and the Superintendent on current and future plans and programs to increase academic achievement. Both post-agendas, agendas are relative to bill eleven thirty-five, which is a resolution declaring a state of educational emergency in the city of Pittsburgh. Council's recess will begin next Wednesday, July twenty-eighth and end Thursday, August nineteenth. The first council meeting after recess will be Friday, August twentieth at ten AM. Council is planning to hold community meetings regarding the American Rescue Plan as follows. Monday, July twenty-sixth, exist, at six PM, excuse me, for our western communities. Wednesday, July twenty-eighth at six PM for our eastern communities. Monday, August second at six PM for our southern communities and Wednesday, August fourth, six PM for our northern communities. Dates and times are pending and locations have not yet confirmed, but hopefully we will have that information confirmed for our Tuesday meeting. Any other comments from members?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Strasburger.
Sorry to, to build the labor and already long meeting, but we had some good conversations today. I just wanted to bring up a separate topic and express my disappointment in the, um, court's ruling yesterday on the rental registration legislation that council passed in twenty fifteen. It's been tied up in court since then, actually preceded my, um, my election to city council. This is such an important tool that the city has not yet been able to implement because it's been tied up in court proceedings. And this is the latest blow, uh, related to the fee structure, um, associated with rental registration. But just to sort of remind residents that this would give our building inspectors and the city the tools to actually enter apartments to do spot check and inspections to check for things like overall safety and over occupancy. Really targeting not the property owners that are doing a great job, but those who are absentee, don't live in the city, don't live in the country. And, um, requiring that they have a local agent to be able to appear in court and really, you know, ensuring that, uh, the quality of the, our living, um, spaces for, for all residences is increased, that they're raising the basement on that. So, I hope that we're able to work through this issue, um, get to a point where, you know, the court can agree that, that the fees are, are fair and that we can start enforcing it. I'm beyond ready for this.
Thank you. Any other members? If not, we need a motion to.
Yes, I'm sorry, Councilman. I just want to say to that, that we also have Act Ninety that I think the city needs to start doing a better job ourselves in some of the things that we're doing in terms of the housing and the, in building inspections on those. And we have the Act Ninety that we incorporated into our code and yet I've not seen anybody extradited back to the city of Pittsburgh to face housing court. And I, I just think that there's a lot of things we don't, we're not currently working on our disruptive properties. And I just think that there's a lot of things that we need to do, tools that we do have available to us that I like to see us use a little bit more frequently. And although I think that our courts would be great if they would help us along. Um, I think that we, and I think once we get people there, it'd be great to have magistrates that work with us. I think that, um, there's a lot to be said for what we need to do internally as well. But with that said, I also want to say separately that we, I've talked to members yesterday. I promised that we would continue having the dialogue about the ARP funding and that, uh, we are starting to schedule meetings. And they're just the beginning. We'll have even additional meetings. Um, Councilwoman Gross pointed out that it's a little bit soon because the one meeting I think we have tentatively scheduled is the twenty-sixth, um, I think. And, uh, that's only six days away, but that's not even confirmed yet. But we'll continue to schedule and work with Councilwoman and others. So if you have suggestions on the meetings, please contact Councilman Burgess, LaVell and myself, and we'll continue to, to work on that schedule. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Now need a motion to approve to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Standby.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.